Okay, I'm going to call the order of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for June 19th, 2017, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, in this time of uncertainty throughout our country and the world, please be with us and give us strength and hope and guidance. Be with us today as we make decisions that impact our county and our citizens. Watch out after our children, our elderly, and those in need. Protect those who protect us overseas and also here at home. In your name I'll make.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here at our meeting. First item up if we have is the public comment session. I would like to ask everyone if they do make public comments to limit their comments to about three minutes. And you'll come up to the podium and make those, and if you can, just come up and indicate your name. And I have a couple people signed up. First is Alia Boyd. Come on up here, Alia.
Good evening. My name is Alia Boyd. I am applying for the Haywood County Youth Voice Delegate at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference in August. First, I would like to thank you for the time to speak, as I know you are very busy with the important work of our county, including finalizing our budget. Second, I would like to thank you for each of your time, service, and dedication to our country and to our county and our communities. My family farm on Jonathan Creek, my schools, youth programs, and church life in this county means so much to me, and I appreciate that all of you are working individually and together to make it the best it can be. I've just finished my eighth grade year at Waynesville Middle School, where I spent all three years in percussion in band. I also have classes in seventh and eighth grade year with Noel Castader in agriculture. Mr. Castader is my favorite teacher, and our work, especially in the greenhouse, is very hands-on. I cannot begin to explain how much I've learned. I participated two years in We the People Civics and Mock Trial Team and learned so much about relevant issues, much like what you face on this board. I also greatly enjoy my work with the Envirathon and the programs through Haywood County Solon Water and Haywood County Waterways. One thing I especially enjoy and feel is very important for youth in our community is 4-H. I am a member of the W.C. All-Stars 4-H Club. My mom and leaders, like Stephanie Parkins, have taught me and my small club so much about the value of being stewards and the next generation of agricultural leadership in our community. This year, I was on the NC State Winning Dairy Skillathon Junior Team and learned so much information that will help me in all of my aspects of livestock. An area I would love to have more to discuss further with the board members are the needs of our 4-H county youth, including assistance with transportation to regional and state events. This past Saturday, I was able to attend the Western District 4-H Activity Day, where I used my speech on Solon Water, and I also had used a winning county speech with 4-H with the Haywood County Solon Water Eighth Grade Speech Contest in February, as I expanded 4-H presentation, and remarkably, I placed with a silver medal. It is my first time at district competition and to get a chance to compete at the state level. My summer is flying by, as next I'll attend Straderman Equestrian Camp at the Shenandoah Valley of Virginia for two weeks, then Haywood Solon Water Yes Camp, Youth Environmental Stewards Camp Year Two, and will represent Haywood County at the NC 4-H Club Congress, competing in Raleigh at the state level with my Solon Water and Environmental Science presentation. Then is off to Band Camp for two weeks before hopefully joining as your Youth Voice Delegate at the NC ACC Conference before school starts back. I say all of this not to brag, because my mama says a self-brag is a half-scandal, but to emphasize to you that there are still young people with a desire and determination to learn and grow in agro-related programs, and that there is still a need for youth involvement in agricultural areas in school and community programs, and that Haywood County's agricultural future and our roots and heritage need nurturing and promotion to garner more youth in these areas. Again, thank you for caring for Haywood County and its people, especially its youth. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Alia. Commissioners, have any questions of Alia?
It's great to see our young people get up here and speak so well before the public. Man's greatest fears, speaking in public, and you've done a wonderful job. You've had some good 4-H teachers through the years, I'm sure, in Haywood County.
Yes.
And I guess Sarah Smart, I know well, is part of your group, right?
Yep. I love Sarah.
Right.
I love all the Smarts.
What would you like us to be aware of, that we don't need to lose...
I think what we really need...
The agricultural component.
We need to put our focuses into getting our youth involved in more agricultural events and more things out in the county, because those things are really dying off. We don't really have a lot of clubs left in 4-H, and I think that's mostly because we're not getting enough people out there, we're not telling enough people, and it's really a thing that I think everybody can do, but they just think that they can't.
Are you already the delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, or you...
No, I'm applying for it.
You're applying for that?
Yes.
Who determines that? Do we know?
I will have to double-check, because we have not the last few years had an applicant from Haywood County, but it may come back to y'all.
Okay. Yeah, we'll try to help you out.
Thank you.
We do have an August meeting, and I'm trying to think, did we have our young people come in for that meeting in August in Durham?
We've sat at the table alone the last, so I do not know, but I will find that out.
From what I'm hearing, in our 4-H program, we have more young ladies than we do young men. Is that correct? I know quite a few...
Yeah.
Young ladies that, like Sarah herself, participating, so kind of keeping things going for us.
Yep. We just are trying to get some more people in there, but I think another thing is, if I could add something else onto that, is that also in our schools, there's, I know there's not a lot of money in the schools, especially with Waynesville Middle, but I would also like to request that we kind of look into the greenhouse for agriculture, because it's been there for a really long time, and I think that it's time we kind of look into fixing it up or getting a new one, because it's not doing that great right now.
Well, thank you for coming to speak to us this evening, and good luck on the application, and we'll try to help you with that, Alia.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Wanda Brooks. Good evening.
Hello. I'm here to discuss pathways and the effect it's had on myself and my neighborhood. When pathways came, maybe, I think it was about 2014, y'all said you'd look at it again in a year, so I'm nervous. Basically, I gave you a packet. Did you get it? I made packets for all of you.
She hasn't delivered it to us yet. Do we need to look at it while...
I want you to have it as we talk, so you could see kind of what I'm talking about.
Okay. All right, Candy, could you hand those to us, please?
And this whole thing with pathways, I just want to say it's not easy for me. I care about people. I realize people need help. I have family members that have addiction and need help, and sometimes get it and sometimes choose not to get it. But it's not easy, but it has affected me negatively. I'm directly across from pathways. Okay, first, in the packet, I've marked through these pictures, because we're on camera. I'm not trying to cause any of these, I'm in trouble, but as of April, mid-April, there were seven sex offenders in pathways. I think most of the county thought pathways was going to be for displaced families. I know I was told that from Gavin Brown, and when I went to see Gavin, he said that's what he was told. And so there were seven, this is as of April. And so that was very concerning, but there's other elements. That's just one element. The homeless shelter brings in, you know, just some problems in itself. I did put other pictures here of things that I've dealt with. This was a gentleman from over there, and he just had a bunch of junk on his truck and parked in front of my facility. This is a guy that slept on my facility for about three days, and I got a call from Jeremy at Pathways telling me about it. And in the beginning, they were supposed to have a backup plan for when they turn people away, and this upset me, because I don't want to be the bad guy. I don't want to have to be calling the police and dealing with this. They're supposed to be handling it. This is just one day when I was there. It's people in the mornings just standing around, talking, smoking, hanging out in front of the facility. This is another gentleman, a sex offender, sitting on the bench, and this is just yesterday. And I'm not, these are just hit and miss when I go up there. It's not like I spend all my time, because truthfully, it upsets me to go up there. But this is just yesterday, a bunch of them, sitting out front, one laying on the bench. And then here's another group just standing around in front. And I did reach out to Nick and to Pathways, beginning like about last June, and I just, I basically asked that they possibly consider putting a privacy fence up. I want to feel safe at my neighborhood. I am directly across from the men's dorm, and I asked for a privacy fence and possibly, could they have these folks walk in, the ones that are on foot, walk in from the sheriff's side? And so far, I've gotten no response, other than the final response I got in October came through Ira, and he said that he had contacted Nick and Jeremy at Pathways, and they have no desire to erect a fence as they campaigned on tearing these fences down, which to me makes no sense. I'm asking them to help, because I don't feel safe at my own property. The older people in my neighborhood don't feel safe. Some of the stories, the lady at Boston Road Tool Rental came out, they were leaning on her car, eating food. RL, some guy stayed there the whole day for like a whole week, just in front of his house, and he just kind of kept an eye on him. He didn't do anything he shouldn't have done, but he's just sitting there. Older people, Ms. Carolyn, she's afraid now, she didn't used to be afraid. They walked right through her, by her house, on both sides, going to Pathways a lot of times. But anyway, this is a lot of it. I don't feel safe going up there. I don't think it's been good for my neighborhood, and I don't think asking for a privacy fence is too much. And that's what I'd like for someone to address, because you said you would look at it again in a year. And I reached out a lot before I came before y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thanks.
Okay, would anyone else like to make a public comment? All right, if not, we'll move to constituent concerns. Brandon, you want to start today? You got any constituent concerns?
No, I don't have any.
I don't.
Mike? Okay. And Ms. Brooks, we'll certainly take a look at the information you provided and also the statements you've made. Next, we have, we don't have any administrative agency reports, I take it?
No.
And do we have any need to discuss the agenda or any adjustment to that? All right. If not, we'll move next to the consent agenda, and it's request approval of June 1st, 2017, special meeting in June 5th, 2017, regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? All right, if not, we'll move to Judy Hickman, who'll come forward with the request approval of May 2017 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Good evening, Judy.
Good evening. Requesting approval of the May releases, refunds, adjustments, and discoveries. Don't have anything to report outside of just normal activity.
Okay, Commissioners, have any questions of Judy?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Next is request approval of May 2017 tax collections update. We have Mike Matthews. Evening, Mike.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our current collections, we are at 96.37. So far, we're having a really good June to finish up the year, very good, and our delinquent account, our collections are at $2,364,722.
Commissioners, any questions of Mike? All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of budget amendments. Julie Davis will come forward, and you can explain those, Julie.
Good evening. I have a couple of budget amendments for you, but they're both quite extensive here. I'll try to go through them quickly. The first one you'll see is a total of $300,180. This is a combination of some areas in our general fund that looked like there was a chance they might go over budget. We can get as close to the budget as possible. We can't go over even a dollar. So I have put in what I think may be a little bit more money than we need to in some of these, and you'll notice that some of these are actually related to salaries and benefits. We've had a number of reorganizations within some areas and departments, and I know you're aware of most of those, and a few retirements and vacation payouts and that type of thing that caused us some of the salary line items to go over just a little bit. We've also have received quite a bit more motor vehicle tax revenue than we were expecting, and we pay the state an amount based on the revenue that we receive, and we have that expense line item in our tax collections department. So that is going up, the data processing, the North Carolina Department of Revenue, Motor Vehicle Tax, the amount we pay the state is going up, but we have a revenue source to cover that, and that revenue source, we expect to be high enough to cover most all of these others. There are a few things on here that have their own direct revenues. There's a Register of Deeds excise tax that we're putting, let me find that one in particular, $38,000 into. We pay half out what comes in, so I've got the full amount budgeted on the revenue side to help cover some of these other things. There's some 4-H grant programs that have a revenue source, they're directly related to a revenue, the expense and revenue are the same. So that's basically what that is. There's a lot on that page, but it's basically to make sure that at the end of the year and after the end of the accruals in July, that we don't go over budget in any of these line items. I'd be glad to answer any questions about that particular one.
Commissioners, have any questions of Julie?
All right, the next budget amendment is a little bit unusual. This is a capital project budget amendment. We had a number of projects this year, some that were started, some that haven't actually been started yet, that we had in the budget for this year, but we don't have budgeted next year. So what I'm doing is moving them from the general fund into a capital project fund to make sure that these get completed or at least get done. The list here is the courthouse window replacement. That was budgeted, so we're moving the budget into a capital project fund. We have some space studies, one for the annex, one behind the courthouse, one for the Waynesville Library, a space study that you're well familiar with, I think, on that one, and the Justice Center space study. We're putting some money into a capital project, so that can continue. These have started, but we want to be able to continue them, because they won't be finished by June 30th. And then we also have the sprinkler system that hasn't started yet, and we have, in the Emergency Operations Center, this is actually a new, a new project. We had a drill, you're aware of a few, well, last Saturday. The drill was last Saturday, and there were a few things that we noticed that would help in a real-life situation in the EOC, and some of those were related to some connectivity between some of the rooms, and so we need some electronic gear built into the walls. And they got a quote for me. The quote is $46,822. We got that quote very quickly and put it on here to budget to move into a capital project. Some of the items on that quote haven't been definitely decided on yet, but we wanted to have the money there, so that when we started the project, we would have the money to at least get most of those done. I think we're going to connect the training room to the war room and possibly some other areas, so that there can be some conversations going back and forth whenever we have a major incident that requires the emergency management group being at the EOC.
Okay, Commissioners, have any questions of Julie? All of these items Julie and Ira have been discussed, with the exception of the Emergency Operations Center.
Yes.
All of these items have been approved by this board or previous board, correct?
Yes. Most of these items are going into a capital project, because you had approved them in the last budget year, and a lot of the maintenance items, we just, for one reason or another, didn't get to, so we were doing that. And just as Julie said, the other is a new item from the drill, and we believe we were both at the drill and walked through the building, believe it would be helpful.
Okay. Julie or Ira, is, I know the call-out system that we were looking at was around $25,000, roughly. Is that part of this, or is that separate?
No, that's separate. In fact, that was budgeted in next year's budget.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And I think that we already have a quote for that, and as soon as the budget gets approved, I think we're going to be able to do that.
Okay.
Yes.
All of this stuff that we're talking about, like you said, except the EOC, is stuff that has already been in the works, just hadn't got it finished or started yet.
Yes, exactly. Already been approved in the budget at one point, except for the EOC.
And the EOC, and maybe I missed that, but, you know, $46,822, but there's money there to do that.
This is putting money there to do that. This is creating the project, and we're taking money from the general fund to do that. It's not the EOC fund, it's the general fund, and I'm using some of the extra motor vehicle tax that's coming in.
The additional money that's available.
Yes, over and above what we budgeted.
Yeah, okay.
How much was it, Julie? How much over?
Well, we still have one more month to collect, but the last month, we collected $400,000, and we typically collect around $200,000, so it was double for that month. So we still have another month to go, so I feel like we're going to have plenty by the end of the year. Of course, that's directly related to that expense. We have to pay a certain portion to the state for collecting that.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Unless there's any other questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Next, we'll move to old business. This is Ira's confirmation of private sale to Pigeon Community Development Center.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and members of the public. Yes, this is on simply, you have previously voted by resolution that a notice of sale be published on May 19th. We went ahead with the notice of publication, and under the statute, we need to bring this back for confirmation after publication of the sale.
Okay, and this is for the sale of the 2.977-acre parcel land and building formerly occupied by Pigeon Community Development Center on 450 Pigeon Street, and we've had several discussions about transferring this to the...
Correct, for a dollar.
Okay, and I believe only, there was only support when we had the hearing.
There was a lot of support here from the community and a lot of support for this project. Every time it's come up, whether it was last year when you re-roofed it, a lot of people showed up and had hoped that this would be the outcome. So there was a lot of support from the community for the sale of the property, and it has a reverter clause in the sale. Should it not be used for the Pigeon Community Development Center and the programs running it, it would revert back to the county, so...
All right, is there any other questions about this? I'll entertain a motion to confirm the private sale to the Pigeon Community Development Center of that 2.977-acre parcel of land and building formerly occupied by them and to be occupied by them, located on 450 Pigeon Street, Waynesville. So move? Second? First and second? Any other discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. All right, next, we've got request approval of the fiscal year 2017 through 2018 budget ordinance. Ira?
Yes. We first presented the budget back at the May meeting, had our public hearing, had our June meeting, had our public session. So this budget ordinance comes forward. In the budget ordinance, additions based on all of the input from the original thing that was put out in mid-May would be the COLA for people making $60,000, $60,100 or less. Would also be the tax software that was requested, and also some additional funding after review for transportation with mountain projects. Otherwise, this budget is pretty much the same. There are some adjustments to some of the salary line items that we made based on getting some updated information and some promotions that have come in since then. But other than that, this budget is the same.
Okay, Commissioners, you know, we had some discussion at our last work session, as well as our meeting regarding the changes, so does anyone have any questions of Ira or comments?
Just want to comment, our school board, and I'd like to congratulate our school board, are able to move forward on the supplement schedule. It's really been in the works for the last seven to 10 years, so our teachers should be very, very pleased. We are now competitive with Buckham County. We're not there, but we are competitive. And I'm sure now, probably the focus needs to be looking at principal shifts, because my understanding now is principals haven't gotten a raise, and teachers pay, we've got teachers making more per month, Mike, than some of our principals and central office staff, so I'm sure that will be a focus. But again, congratulations to our school board on moving forward with the supplements, and for our commissioners staying with the funding format, so they can do that.
Ira, basically, the budget that you have presented is a revenue-neutral budget. Is that right?
Correct. It does have a revenue-neutral rate, and there's a whole lot of fund balance used in this budget.
Right, yeah. How much fund balance are we utilizing?
Two point, little over $2.5 million.
Okay.
And our capital is a little point, little over 2.7, so it's quite a bit in relation to that.
Okay. What will that take us to, Ira, percentage-wise? What's the projection? I know we won't know till the end of the month.
When the, yes, we have, with the accruals back, and there are a lot of caveats on this projection, the hope is that we'll remain with this at 23 percent, and we won't know until after the audit is done on the June 30th, 2018 figure. So that's what we're looking for, is that one date, June 30th, 2018. But the hope is, if we have a good economy and no major events, that we'll maintain at least that 23 percent we wanted to maintain, plus the community college money when this is done. That's the hope. A lot of that depends on what happens this summer and the accruals back and such, and no major events. But the hope is we will be able to maintain that with this.
Appreciate it. Ira and Julie, you know, when we first started the budget process, we told y'all to do, you know, try to use the same amount of money that we had last year, and I think we did that, with the exception of the voting machines and some other capital outlay, then we added a couple of things, so, but I do appreciate the staff's hard work in getting us where we need to be on that, so. I think I've only had one comment, it's the only comment I've had. We've had, this has been out, you know, the budget. We've had, this has been out, you know, the budget and stuff, so. I guess is, every year, you know, you have comments on the budget, but this is, it's been quiet. People are satisfied with what, with the work that you all have done and I want to thank you all for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Enslin. It's very much a team effort. There's a lot of people, department heads involved and Julie's staff, led by Julie, has been absolutely wonderful in working through all this, so thank you.
I've got a few comments Kirk. You know, I don't like it, I've made that clear. I'm not happy because of the people that it affect. However, I not only said that I would only raise taxes, which this is not a tax increase, I know it's a revenue neutral, but it is affecting 58% of the folks that's going to have to pay a little bit more, which is not a lot more, just a little bit. I was against that, however, also campaigned saying that I would be a good steward of the budget as well. And being a good steward of the budget, you know, I'm not comfortable myself going below that 23% after speaking with Ira and Julie. Feel like we may have a little bit more room, but I'm trusting you guys. This is my first go-around at it and trusting these men here that we are good stewards of our budget. There's, there's several things that I would like to see us do going forward. You know, debt's always been a huge concern of mine, along with the properties that I'd like to see us push to start to get rid of. You know, and there's a couple of other things I'd like to see us do where we possibly could change this, you know, next year, the year after. Because I'm trying to look after the citizens and the people that put me where I am today. So that's, that's the comments I have to make. I've even looked at going to a flat rate. I've looked at doing all kinds of things. I don't even know if we could even do that legally or not, but I have looked the budget over. As I said, I'm trusting you guys, I feel good about it. And going down below that 23% probably is not a smart thing to do. Because if we do have a, another rockslide, flood, school burned down, if anything happens, you know, it can affect us. Not only that, but if we did need to borrow money, I understand that you've got to have a certain percentage there or you can't even borrow the money. So I just wanted to make those comments based off of the things I had talked with or about in our previous meetings. So anyway, that is what it is.
Thank you Brian.
Just, I'll make a couple of comments too and, you know, just going to talk about that fund balance and why we consider it very important to, to keep a level that's, that we're talking about, you know, because when I come on, it was relatively low. And before I was here, you all had had some issues being way too low and had gone, had to go to the local government commission and get scolded, I think, and you know, actually it affected your ability to borrow money. So we worked very diligently and very conservative. We were very fiscal minded with budgets throughout these last few years. We got that fund balance up there and we actually got our bond rating moved up higher because of that. So you know, what monies that we did, having to borrow or do borrow, we were eligible for the lowest rates. And speaking of the debt, you know, when I first come on, we'd just taken on the DSS building and all and, you know, I think if I'm correct, we were up in the 70 million plus range for debt. Now we're, I think, under 50?
Close, I don't know the exact number.
Well, but somewhere, so we've continued to bring it down every year and continued to invest in infrastructure throughout the county. You know, that one of our major jobs are, that we, we have to do sitting up here is we have to weigh what's best for this county and what direction we want to go and what, what kind of services we want to provide. And Haywood County is always, as long as, you know, I've lived here all my life, it's been a very desirable place to live. Quality of life is very, very well and, you know, we have good healthcare, we have good education system, we have, you know, we can go to, we go to bed at night, we sleep pretty soundly because we know we're, we're safe here in this county. Well, all that comes at a cost. And so, you know, this, this board, none of us have been, wanted to raise taxes ever. And, and you know, I think there's only been one time since I've been on this board that we've actually had a tax hike. We had a revenue neutral rate adjustment in 2011 and we're going to have a, looks like a revenue neutral rate adjustment again this year. But that's done because we have particular needs in this county that have to be met. Most of them are in public safety and, you know, the ability to answer a call when, you know, a citizen has a 911 call, to be able to get out there and, and meet that. Also, you know, with law enforcement and, you know, just basically doing the everyday business of the county and keeping it with the level that we want it to be at. And then sometimes I talked about the reality, you know, you have an idea, ideology of, you know, no taxes or, you know, do the, don't do this, don't do that, but, and reality hits and you have to, you have to do some things. And so, you know, I for one had hoped that we were not going to be in this position. I hoped that the revale was going to be, you know, at least stable or maybe even above, but it didn't turn out that way. And, you know, every year we have continuing needs in this county to keep us growing and keep us, you know, where we want to, where we want to be. It's a desirable place to live. And, you know, we've been a leader in the western part of the state in this, this area and, you know, and I'd like to keep us that way. And I think this budget, there's a lot of things that we'd like to have done even more in this budget, which we, we're not able to do. But if we don't do this tax rate adjustment, revenue neutral, I think you jeopardize the, the services in the county and then you're looking at squarely potentially a tax rate hike next year. And I think that's against anything that any of us want to do, so that's my comment.
Yeah, Mike made the one point I was going to make. To me, this was a crucial year. We either go backwards or hold on, and we holding our own. If we go backwards, then next year, we either increase fund balance or we go back and cut the budget. And I really didn't want to get into that, so I think we were probably going to make the tough decision tonight not to go backwards. If you ever watched Patton in his movies, he never wanted to take over the same ground twice. And I feel like if we didn't go revenue neutral, we'd be fighting the same battle or worse next year, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate all the comments. Did you want to say something else? Oh, I, I thought so, I just, we could go back around.
You don't want to cover the same ground twice?
Yeah, you'd be like, you don't want to be like Patton.
You don't want to cover it twice?
I, I do appreciate all the time that's been and effort that has been put in toward the budget and that is the, you know, the staff, all the department heads. And what a lot of people don't see about the budget process is it, it lasts for approximately six months with a lot of talk, a lot of concessions made, a lot of requests made, a lot of people's feelings get hurt and they feel like their department needs something and, and we just can't supply it. So I hope the public doesn't think that everybody gets what they want because if you ask any one department head, any department head, they'll tell you, no, we don't. I do appreciate also all the frank discussions that the commissioners have had and the positions that each one of you have had in this. Been very involved this, this time because I think, because of the importance of it and, and the issues. So I feel pretty good about the budget. I feel good about the fact that we have taken money from fund balance. I like to keep a healthy fund balance, but I like to keep it close because I feel like if we have too much fund balance, we're, we are, we're saving the people's money and I think it needs to be put to use for the best interest of the county, so. With it, with that, if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget ordinance as it has been presented this evening. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Ira. Next, we've got request approval of the North Carolina Forest Service Annual Agreement for Physical Year 2017-18. Julie?
While Julie's coming up, Ira and Julie both, I want to say thank you as well. Me being a new commissioner, spent a lot of time on the phone with Ira especially and Julie, I took her time up one day for, for quite some time, so thank you guys for helping me through the budget, so.
You're most welcome.
That's what we're here for, we're happy to do it. What you have in front of you is the annual forest service contract. They usually have a representative here, but I think they're fighting fires across, probably Florida, but across the United States. They, the contract that we have with the forest service is a 60% state and 40% county. This year, the 40% that's going into the county budget is $95,753.20 and that's what you will be approving today. It's actually reduced, last year was about 114,000, so it's a little bit lower this year than it was last year.
Okay, so this is our portion of the money that we pay in order to support the forestry service to defend the fires that we have.
Yeah, they, they do, yeah, maintain the, maintain the parks, the, the parks, but they do a lot of firefighting.
All right. Okay, anybody have any questions about this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the annual agreement with the North Carolina Forest Service for the fiscal year 2017 through 2018.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we have Brian Matlock, JC Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Chair, coming forward with his county plan and budget for fiscal year 2017 through 18. Hi Brian.
Hello, hello, good evening gentlemen. Made it easy for you, everything's exactly the same as last year. Of course, there's more need than we had the money to pay for services, but the same 145,000 plus from the state plus the county's percentage of matching will remain the same. And it's going to the same amount to each program as well this year. The board decided to keep it as such since we did not get any increase in funds and, which is unfortunate. So the Aspire Day Treatment Program and Kids at Work Program combined for Aspire, the Project Challenge Community Service Program, the Hawthorne Heights Group Home out in Bryson City, the Heights Compass Outdoor Recreational Program and the Mountain Mediation Restorative Justice Program are the five programs that we will be funding. So as far as budgeting goes, that'll make it easy for you guys because nothing changed. I do want to make note that those of you who are paying attention to the state budgets and such, be prepared that in that budget, if you haven't, weren't aware, that included in that, which we should know hopefully in the next few days, that the state of North Carolina will be finally, we are the last state that has not raged the juvenile age, included in that budget to begin in 2019, once it is officially told to us, that age will move to 18 in 2019. With that will come additional JCPC funds, which of course means the matching will be a little larger for each county. So I just wanted to put that out there as kind of a planning ahead into knowing that we will have a greater need because we will have these 16 and 17-year-olds at that time. Especially with the planning process and talking about taking six months and such, that will have to begin next year.
Brian, what type of offenses are they, are they looking at placing all offenses?
The proposal, now there's competing proposals, but as of right now, what it looks like will pass is that all non-violent felonies and all misdemeanors will be moved up to age 18. So all Class A through I, which are the violent murders, rapes and so forth, will remain. They were originally, they will start out being charged in juvenile, just to make sure they got everything right, nobody messed something up, and then it'll be transferred to Superior Court for the 16 and 17-year-olds. Now, what will not change is that beginning at the age of 13 juveniles can be bound over to adult court if deemed through, by the judge that that would be the case. So that part will not change. Now, in the future, later on down the road, they're looking at maybe moving off charges, including the violent felonies, to start out in juvenile court. But in the beginning, it will only be the non-violence and all misdemeanors.
So is that traffic offenses as well?
Traffic offenses, well, because some of those are criminal. Regular traffic does not fit within the same guidelines because.
So infractions will stay, but, but anything that's not, if it's a misdemeanor, reckless driving, is that in juvenile court?
That would be in juvenile, yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, and there's six states that charge at age 17. South Carolina, Louisiana moved theirs to 18 last year. And New York State, which was the last, other than us, just passed their age to move to 18 in April, so we are the last state. So we're very, very hopeful that's going to be the case because as we know, through juvenile, you know, if a 16 or 17-year-old gets charged with something in court, they have to pay court costs and all this other stuff and probation fees. Well, you got to get a job to do that. Well, you can't get a job because, well, now you have a record. And we know 16, 17-year-olds don't think like adults. And we know stuff that we did at 16, 17-year-old, we're lucky we didn't get caught for sometimes. So the hope is that we'll be able to do what we do in juvenile court and turn things around. You know, I've been, been very fortunate this year to watch 15 kids that I used to work with, stayed long enough to be able to see them graduate high school. But unfortunately, there's one in particular who was 16, probably should not have been charged with what he charged with, but he was, and wants to be an electrician. Well, guess what? Can't get an electrician's license. He just graduated and doing well. So, so that's just one slight example of the damage it can do long-term for a 16 and 17-year-old. Can't even get financial aid for college and you cannot apply for military, can't even get a license to cut hair if you have any charge at 16 or 17, no matter, even if it's how minor it is. So it is the right thing to do and we're ready for it and hopefully this week we hear about it, so.
Okay, commissioners, any questions of Brian? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council County Plan for 2017, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, thank you Brian. Next, we've got request approval of Haywood Home and Community Block Grant Funding for Physical Year 2017, 2018. We have Sarah Jane Melton. Good evening Sarah Jane.
Good evening. Glad to be with you all, appreciate the time. I'm bringing to you a recommendation from the Haywood County Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee regarding recurring federal and state funding for Haywood County to meet the needs of older adults who reside in your county. The projected amount is $403,368.85 and requires a 10% county match. The recommendation is for mountain projects, health and human services and interim healthcare to provide these services to older adults throughout the county.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? And these, these approvals are ones that come every year this time of year, so. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Haywood Home and Community Block Grant for the year 2017, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we have request approval of Health and Human Services Agency contracts over $50,000. We have Michelle Haynes here, our Business Services Director. Hi Michelle.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
And I have five contracts that need approval and these are contracts for the new fiscal year, for the budget we just passed fiscal year 2017 to 2018. The first three contracts are for medical transportation. We have mountain projects with a contract for $100,000. Elite Transportation Services for $85,000 and Champion Cab for $85,000. And Champion Cab for $85,000 as well. And our medical transportation, that's where our contractor will transport eligible Medicaid recipients to and from the medical providers, and that's coordinated by two staff we have at Haywood County Health and Human Services Agency. The next contract we have is for administration of the subsidized childcare program for Haywood County, and that's through Southwestern Community Development, and we've contracted with them annually. The total amount of this contract is $3,631,000. And I know that's a staggering figure, but that is what we consider pass-through money. It's 100%. No county money is attached to that. And lastly, we have a contract with Haywood Vocational Opportunities in the amount of $72,000, and that's for job readiness, development, and training. And we contract with Haywood Vocational Opportunities each year as well.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions? Of Michelle?
Just, I used to be on that board, and this is just pretty much standard stuff every year.
It is. It's our same contracts, our same vendors, and our same services each year.
Is all this pass-through money, Michelle?
Not all of it. Our medical transportation is 100% reimbursable, so there's no county money attached to that. Of course, with Southwestern, that's 100%, no county money attached to it. And with Haywood Vocational Opportunities, that's through our Work First Block Grant. So, there is a portion that will be county money. We do have to meet a maintenance of effort amount, and that's the county required spending limit before we start getting our 100% federal funds from our Work First Block Grant. So, it's probably about 40% county funds, and the remainder will be federal funds.
I know, that's just, that's a good thing, Ira. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do we need to vote as a group or individually on these?
I think what Chip's going to tell me is individually.
Yes.
But we can vote as a group if he'll let me. But he's not...
You're not going to let him?
I think what you might do is ask the board to suspend the rules to allow it to be voted together in a block. You could do it that way.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for the board to suspend the rules to allow us to vote collectively. I got first and second before I can get the whole motion out. All in favor?
All in favor.
Indicate by saying aye. We're going to vote for this collectively, first and second. All right. That's unanimous. So, I'll entertain a motion that the contract for mountain projects, Medicaid Medical Transportation for $100,000, the Elite Transportation Services Medicaid Medical Transportation for $85,000, the Champion Cab Medicaid Medical Transportation for $85,000, the Southwestern Childcare Direct Services and Service Support Contract for $3,501,3103, and the Haywood Vocational Opportunities Incorporated Work First Job Readiness Development and Training Contract for $72,000. All those contracts, I'll entertain a motion that they be approved.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
There wasn't anybody opposed to that, was there? I forgot that part. Okay. Thank you. Ah, next.
You were looking at Brandon. You were looking at me.
It's not a bad thing. Request approval of contract amendment with Southwestern Child Development Commission totaling $3,778,557 for subsidized childcare program, direct services and service of support from federal and state funding. Michelle, tell us about that.
That's a mouthful, isn't it?
Yes.
This is for our current contract in the current fiscal year, fiscal year 16, 17. And this happens a lot of times at the end of the fiscal year, is money is reallocated from the counties who haven't spent their allocation to counties like Haywood who need more funding. So, again, this is no county of money attached to it. We've been reallocated some additional funds for our subsidized daycare program. So, this is for our existing contract with Southwestern Child Development Commission, and it would raise the contract from $3,285,966 to $3,778,557. And you originally approved the original contract at the beginning of the fiscal year, and this is just an amendment to increase that contract.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions about this? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract amendment with Southwestern Child Development Commission totaling $3,778,557, as explained by Ms. Haynes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, we got request approval of the annual contract between Sheriff's Office and Haywood Community College to provide school resource officers on the campus of Haywood Community College.
Mr. Chairman, after some review and discussion on this item, we're asking if one of the commissioners would make a motion simply to continue or table this until the next meeting. There's a couple of items that we need to resolve in the contract that came up today.
Second.
All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is, will just be moved to the next meeting.
Correct. We'll have it there.
All right. Next is request approval to solicit design from Nature Explorer to provide research-based outdoor classroom design services at the Canton Library Giving Garden to be funded through a gift to the Haywood County Public Library Foundation. Sharon Woodrow, Library Director. Hi, Sharon.
Good afternoon. The Haywood County Public Library would like to partner with Nature Explorer, an organization that provides research-based outdoor classroom design services to create reading and learning areas in the open field located behind the Canton Library where the Giving Garden has been established. The Giving Garden was started as an education-oriented initiative to foster environmental stewardship and empower the public to grow fresh food. With the addition of an outdoor classroom and discovery areas, the library will be expanding the educational offerings available outside the Canton Library. We hope that developed outdoor space will inspire people of all ages to connect with nature and will attract new visitors to Canton, as well as new library patrons, who will discover all of the resources and services that the library has to provide. What we have done is I talked to Ira, and I have talked to Dale as well, Dale Burris. He came down and looked at the area. And we developed a committee, talked to the master gardeners, they have been working with this as well, and the horticulturist from the town of Canton. We worked with a company called Nature Explorer, and if they can come in and design this outdoor classroom, they will also put together a workshop that will allow local teachers and anyone else, up to 50 people, to come in that can attend this workshop. But the whole idea is to create an area that we can have outdoor classrooms, have quiet study areas, and be able to provide not only informational areas and classes to go along with the Giving Garden, but to have outdoor Nature Explorer areas for children and learning areas for adults at the Canton Library. So, it's really a win-win situation, especially since a generous donor is going to pay for this whole project.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions? This is donated money, and we much appreciate whoever the donor was. Can we say who the donor was or not? Is it...
It was Ann Overbeck, a library lover from way back.
All right. We'll tell her the county appreciates her gift very much.
Yeah, certainly will.
Any other questions, commissioners? All right. Thank you for that presentation, Sharon. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, approve to solicit the design from Nature Explorer to provide research-based outdoor classroom design services for the Canton Library Giving Garden based on that donated funding.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Next, we've got request approval to reclassify two current information technology positions to better meet the needs of providing support and services. Lori Tomlin, our Information Technology Director. Evening, Lori.
Good evening, commissioners. How are you?
Good.
I'm here to request two open positions be reclassified to, as you said, better serve our end users and the county as a whole. The first position is currently a computer support technician, to which is typically hardware. And we'd like to reclassify that to focus more on software. The enterprise software, such as Microsoft Office and 365 that we're going to convert to next fiscal year, Laserfish and Kronos, and some of the applications that are, that touch every desktop, nearly every desktop, in Haywood County. So, we'd like to focus on application specialists for software versus hardware. The second position we'd like to reclassify is the current Computer Network Administrator II position, and we'd like to reclassify that to an Assistant Director of Technology and Communications. That position would retain the duties of a network administrator, and in addition to assist, be an assistant to myself, the director. We have a need for that as far as some project management and skills, and just some extra depth in the management tier of IT.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions about those reclassifications?
I mean, does it add more to the budget, or does it just move stuff around?
The, one is a promotion.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes. That was when I had discussed a little earlier, that one of the things that was in here was a promotion. That's one of them that was there.
But this is in the budget?
That you just passed.
Yeah.
Correct. If you, if you want to reclassify, the reason this is brought before you is because it's not in your present, the job classifications of Assistant Director of Information Technology and the software specialist job classification are not in your present pay plan. So, it wasn't something that I would have the authority to have reclassified the positions, because it wasn't in that listing.
But the money was budgeted in the budget to try to help the situation?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the reclassification of the two current information technology positions to better meet the needs of providing support and services as requested by Ms. Tomlin.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have, well, we're going to skip that. Request approval of the Second Amendment to the First Amended and Restated Convenience Centers Service Agreement at a cost of $13,520 annually to be paid from solid waste fees. We have David Francis, our solid waste administrator.
Good evening, commissioners. Everybody had a wonderful weekend. Happy Father's Day to you all. The, before you is the Second Amendment to the First Amended and Restated Convenience Centers Service Agreement. His language, not mine. You know, I didn't get that. He lawyered that one up pretty well, so. If you remember, commissioners, we entered into a service agreement for Consolidated Waste Services to manage the convenience centers in 2010. And in 2015, we amended that agreement for Consolidated Waste Services, or CWS, to take over and run the Materials Recovery Facility down in Claude. And part, so we amended that contract in 10, and then now we're going to reamend again. And what this contract is going to do is that we want to open a Mooney Cove and Highway 110 convenience centers an additional day during the week. Back during the recession in 2009, we reduced the hours, I mean, excuse me, reduced the days, operations for all the convenience centers. As we've been talking through, Mooney Cove roughly has about 260,000 patrons each year. And what, and we've been tracking, we track the numbers coming in. And Highway 110 has actually become our third busiest convenience center site over the last two years. So, it is a small site. It doesn't have the, you know, size. So, I need to take some of the pressure off of that size, and by opening it another day as well, too. So, to do that, this is what this agreement outlines, is that we would be increasing that agreement by the $1,126.66 a month. And also, a part of that, too, is where we have some other things, some other items that we may want to do in the future. Instead of having to come back before you each time, you're giving the, some authority to the county manager to amend the agreement anywhere below $25,000. So, those are the two highlights of this agreement.
So, again, for the public, which two places, which two places will be open?
Mooney Cove and Highway 110.
And do we know what day of the week that would be?
Well, they'll be, they'll be open Monday through Saturday.
Okay.
All convenience centers are closed on Sunday, but then now they'll be open six days a week instead of five.
Five to six.
Five to six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And from, what are the hours of the, five to six days, and they're open till?
Seven to five. They start at seven o'clock in the morning.
And the doors don't close before five?
Yeah, they do.
Just, we want to make sure.
They almost close.
They almost close.
Almost.
I'm sure they're right, excited about getting out of there at five, like everybody else.
Got their hand on that.
Have constituent concerns about that.
It's still going Friday.
If you, if there is a concern there, I've not heard. This is the first I've heard. If there is, let me know. This is the first I've heard.
Well, I'm just...
When do we open Mooney Cove?
I'm flying.
Wednesday or Thursday, this week.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to open it. We, the electric went well over the weekend, testing hydraulics right now. Had a little bit of a leak in one of the lines today. We think that we can resolve that by tomorrow, and we'll open up Wednesday if that works all out. If not, it'll definitely be open on Thursday.
That's good.
Yeah, it's good.
That'd be a good site.
It's going to be a good site.
We appreciate all your hard work, even though we give you a hard time. We do appreciate that.
Thank you. The, Dale Burris and Chris Boyd also need some of those thanks there. Dale really helped out on Friday when we're doing our final inspection there, and it was, he showed a few electricians how it's really done. So, that was, that was good to have him out there, just sort of got us all back on to where we could get a temporary CO done. So, that was helpful. The, please come, please come out. The site's not going to be fully finished. The, there is part of the town of Waynesville, you know, we're having to do a privacy fence around there, and they're putting these individual slats in between there. And so, it's taken them a little bit longer than what we thought. But the town of Waynesville was comfortable with letting us have the temporary CO. They gave us 30 days. These guys think they'll be done by, you know, end of the week or next week, so.
How about the 209?
209 site, we had a construction meeting out there. Dale and Ira were out there as well last Tuesday, and they still think they're on projection to get done, you know, the latter part of July. So, we've got about six weeks to get done. They formed up the concrete pads this last week. They started working on the electrical out there as well, running the conduit, the electrical conduits going, goes under the pads, and so they started running that out there today, and had their first inspection today for the electrical work. So, it's coming.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mooney Cove is going to be an impressive site once done.
Already is.
Yeah, it's an impressive site.
David, when did you say this will start? July 1st?
I'm sorry, sir?
The six-day-a-week, when will that start?
It'll, yeah, July 1st is when the others are going to start.
July 1st?
Yeah.
I think that'll be a good thing. A constituent concern is people that were concerned it was closed at one day. So, I think it'll be a good thing that we're going to be open six days, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the First Amended and Restated Convenience Center Service Agreement at a cost of $13,520 annually to be paid from... That's not right, is it?
Annually?
Monthly.
What now, sir?
That is the annual cost for the additional day at the two sides.
Oh, added that to, to the annual contract. Okay. Sorry about that.
And the discretion that was discussed is in case we need to add an additional day to another side, so that...
Okay. Kevin made the motion. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Bill. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you Dale and Chris, too, for the work on Mooney Cove. Next, we've got request approval of amendment to the Haywood County Public Health and Solid Waste Awareness and Compliance Ordinance. Got our county attorney, Chip Keegan.
Mr. Chairman, this is, I view it as a technical amendment. It came out by, something you noticed in court one day. Our ordinance incorrectly stated that a violation of Chapter 159, Public Health and Solid Waste Awareness and Compliance, could result in a penalty of a maximum 30-day imprisonment. There's no authorization for that in the statutes. So what this would simply do is remove that portion of the penalty section of our ordinance and, but would also add the ability to assess civil penalties. Of course, this has to be done by the court, but that would be, that's something that is authorized, but the, the actual 30-day imprisonment is not authorized, so that's the change that this would, would make. And it's, I view it as a technical change, but thank you, Mr. Chairman, for catching it.
I wish I could take credit for that, but the judge called me to the bench and explained that, told me about that. It wasn't my case, but I happened to be in court that day, so. All right, anybody have any questions about that? Judge Weejay Wickrama is the one who brought that to my attention. So I'll entertain, unless there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the Haywood County Public Health and Solid Waste Awareness and Compliance Ordinance as presented by county attorney, Chip Keegan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Chip, for getting that done so quickly. Next is request approval to review and revise the county incentive policy for emerging and small businesses. Ira Dove.
Yes. Back in May of 2004, an incentive proposal for business and industry was proposed by Haywood County Economic Development Commission. And we have, as part of the attachment, the minutes from that and the proposal, and if y'all notice, before I read the resolution, if y'all notice, that as part of this, it was stated that the guidelines are not inclusive, that we would need more work for emerging and small businesses. And recently, it's become clear that we have some wonderful large employers in our county that we need to support. And we need to provide, continue to provide supports to attempt to recruit some, some folks to join them. And as a county, if we're going to, much of the, the growth that we have and do experience during the recession is the, the increase in small business. And so going back to this 2004 policy and looking at the present atmosphere, we've had some conversations and visited with some small businesses and had some discussions and also talked with the EDC. And it's time to, to visit, you know, making a policy. So with that, I'm gonna put forward the resolution and I'll, I'll read this resolution, Mr. Chairman. Whereas by action taken by the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, the board, at a regular meeting, May 3rd, 2004, an incentive proposal for business and industry proposed by Haywood County Economic Development Commission was considered and approved, a copy of which is attached heretofore as Exhibit A. And whereas explained by Mark Klasby, Director of the Economic Development Commission, at said meeting, such guidelines were not intended to be all-inclusive and needed more work for emerging and small businesses, but would serve as a guideline for working with major clients. And whereas the Board of Commissioners and the Greater Haywood County Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber, entered into a memorandum of understanding on March 3rd, 2014, whereby the Chamber agreed to perform economic development services and is a direct result of which the Economic Development Council, EDC, was formed. Whereas it is opinion of the board that one of the best opportunities for economic, job, and wage growth in Haywood County is to incentivize the expansion of existing small businesses and establishing of new small businesses. Now therefore be it resolved by the board that the EDC is requested to review and advise, and if appropriate, establish and present for consideration a revised and expanded incentive program to include investments for the attraction, retention, and expansion of smaller business sectors that will create new capital construction and investment and high-wage jobs. In return, qualifying businesses would be eligible for reimbursement of incremental tax collections resulting from such investments beginning July 1st, 2017, to take effect January 1st, 2018, and annually thereafter.
Okay, commissioners, have any questions about this revision to the incentive agreement?
Just a comment or two serving on this board. Yeah, there's, it's, it's kind of a changing, or a changing effort, I guess, or whatever. I mean, we, our, our particular incentive program was geared for bigger, bigger businesses. And, you know, you've got a lot of small businesses now trying to expand new, you know, or trying to recruit small businesses. And so it gives you another little feather in your cap that you can sit down and, you know, maybe potentially lure somebody or encourage them to, to expand and which benefits the county. And, you know, it's just another tool for us to utilize.
Yeah, I mean, it's very competitive out there to attract new business and most every governmental entity around has some type of incentive plan and we need to make ours competitive.
Yes.
And we're already getting questions and, you know, inquiries, you know, about if there is anything that you can do for, you know, small expansions and whatever. So, you know, it's, it's a time to look at it and see what we can come up to, you know, come up with. And it's like you said, if we don't, there's other ones out there already doing it. So, you know, we need to be kind of on a level playing field.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revision to the county incentive policy for emerging and small businesses.
So what? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Okay, next we have the request approval of county manager contract. I know all of you had in your packet of information, the contract for employment with our county manager, present county manager, Ira Dove. This would continue his employment. It is a, an at-will employment contract. The pay under which that is being provided is the exact same pay at his request. That, he was paid last year. He will, we were talked about, discussed that, get provided some type of raise, but he is not, he, he's happy with what he's making here and we appreciate that and the citizens should as well. There's a provision in the contract when, if there is a termination without cause, if we terminate his employment without cause, that he would be paid one week of pay for every week, every year that he has, not every week, but every year that he has been employed with the county, which if you look at other contracts, and I'm sure that the Chip has, Chip has been familiar with that as well. And I wish I could say fortunately, but unfortunately, I believe I've looked at about five of these since I've been a county commissioner, is, is very reasonable under the circumstances. Matter of fact, in some parts of this, this is not a real sought-after position throughout the state, county managers or city managers or town managers. So we're happy to have a qualified candidate who served, I think, to serve the county very well. And so, does anyone have any questions about that employment contract? Chip, you've reviewed this?
I certainly have. I think it's fine.
And, and Ira, have you reviewed it and you're happy with the contract?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any, you want to have any other questions? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the county manager contract attached as Exhibit 22 to our agenda.
Second.
First by Mike, second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. And thank you for, Ira, for serving again.
Thank you.
Okay, any commissioner have any additional item they want to bring forth this evening? All right, it's been a pleasure. Appreciate everybody staying. And with that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So what? Second.
All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.